Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. This is the meeting of the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee. It is Wednesday, February fourteenth. It's time is six thirty-three PM. We're at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School. And we are going to call the meeting to order for the school committee. Do we want to call the meeting to order for any other committees at this time?
We have to call on the committee to order correct the order.
Yes, Board of Selectmen will call their meeting to order at six thirty-three PM.
And that is the Dudley Board of Selectmen.
Sorry.
And I think at this time, we do not have quorums for the other boards. Okay. Great. Thank you. And we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and just as for all.
And we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. And thank you again for coming on Valentine's Night. We have some waters and some, some different treats if anyone gets a little hungry. So before we start the presentation, what we'd like to do is just kind of introduce people who are here at the table tonight, if we can do that. Why don't we start Mr. Kamasi?
Henry Kamasi, Charlton Finance Committee.
Edgolos, Town of Charlton, Town Administrator.
Jamie Delovoe, School Committee Member, Charlton.
Kelly Zella, Charlton School Committee.
Jean Costello, on the Charlton side.
I'm Kathy Carminiani, from the Dudley side.
Steven LaRice, Superintendent.
I'm Kami Lamaca, the Interim Business Services.
Larien Chikering, School Committee from Dudley.
Caitlin Penzick, School Committee from Dudley.
Heather Harriman, Director of People Personnel Services.
John Root, Town Administrator in Dudley.
Jay Johnson, Dudley Selectmen.
John Marcy, Dudley Vice Chairman.
Kerry Singenevich, Dudley Chairman, Board of Selectmen.
Mark Landry, Dudley Board of Selectmen, Clerk.
Janice Shane, Dudley Finance Committee.
Rich Carminiani, Treasurer Collector, Dudley.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate that. And now we'll move over to the presentation of the Dudley Charlton Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Overview. Superintendent LaRice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and School Committee, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, I really appreciate your time this evening in the audience. I appreciate your time as well. This is an opportunity for us to present FY twenty-five and what it may look like. As we all remember, last year was a very difficult fiscal year. I'd like to be able to tell you from the get-go that this year will be very easy, but I'm going to tell you it's not. But it's not the same as last year from, from, from the word go, which is great for all of us, but there are still some things that we have to plan on and we have to look at fiscally. This evening's presentation is not a presentation to make votes or to make recommendations to the school committee. It's to present information on fiscal year twenty-five and to answer questions that are out there. I am going to recommend that the school committee hold a budget workshop at the end of this month on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, to work through any of the feedback and the information that's received this evening from either town or from our own members on the school committee. So we will present this to you, and I hope that we answer some of the many questions that you may have regarding fiscal year twenty-five moving forward. So the agenda this evening in this presentation, and it is on two, it is on two screens. There's a screen there, but you have the PowerPoint presentation as well, is to first discuss relevant information that's pertinent to the district moving forward in the fiscal planning that we do. Talk about assumptions and risks that are still out there. As you know, any fiscal planning has, involves assumptions and risks to the budget process because we don't always have all of the answers to all of our questions as we start a very lengthy process of settling on a fiscal year twenty-five budget. Then talk about the fiscal year twenty-two-five budget, what it looks like, and then if there are any questions as well. The first slide here is to really express our appreciation. Last year was a very difficult year. It doesn't matter whether you were from Dudley or from Charlton, or from Dudley Charlton Regional School District. It was a very difficult year. So we want to first express our greatest appreciation to our town leaders for working hard through that entire process. Town leaders of both Boards of Selectmen, Town Administrators, Finance Committee, we really do appreciate all of your efforts in helping us get into fiscal year twenty-four and preparing for us for FY twenty-five as well. We also want to thank the town voters. They, they were active. They were engaged. They were involved. They had voices. Their voices were supported, obviously. But we appreciate that they were engaged and that they exercised their right as town voters in our two communities. It certainly makes us a better district to have the voices of our communities involved in our processes. And then with to the broader DCRSD community, this is our staff, educators, parents, students. We really appreciate their compassion. Dudley Charlton is a special place. There's no question about that. It's really a community-based school system, which it always has been since it was its inception in the early seventies, and it remains a very big community function for us. I always talk about being here late, being here on Saturday, being here on Sunday. It doesn't matter. This campus is used all the time. So that's a reflection of this being felt as a community-based place or location for either community. So we want to thank them as well. Again, we really express our appreciation for fiscal year twenty-four and giving, giving us, and supporting a landing zone for us for this, this current year, but also preparing us for FY twenty-five. Next, I just want to reiterate what the budget is about. The budget seems to be pretty consistent here in Dudley Charlton, but really, we're anticipating what we have for revenue. We're anticipating what we have for expenditures. That's what we do as we prepare our fiscal year twenty-five budget. But remember, there are always competing interests. So what's important to me is what's highlighted on the bottom of this particular text. "The budget process forces the discussion that will inform choices among various programs competing for the limited available resources." That's what a budget process is. There's never been an assumption that we will get everything that we want from the person who supports us in the food service program all the way through. We, there's never an understanding in our district that we get everything that we ask for. It's because we are a tax-based operation. So we have competing interests, and we will always have competing interests within our budget. This is my fifth presentation. This is my fifth presentation to you as a community, to Dudley Charlton Regional School District. I have to say through these previous four presentations, in this presentation, there really aren't any bells and whistles. There really has never been an opportunity for us to be overly creative, innovative, what's the next best thing? We've always been a level services at best budget, at best. We've never really been above and beyond. And once again, I go back to our community of educators. We're lucky we have the community educators we have because they go above and beyond. You may have heard me say this through FY twenty-four, but when you work in Dudley Charlton, the expectation is that you go above and beyond. It's not a nice thing to do. You have to. You don't have a choice in Dudley Charlton. So this is the fifth presentation, my fifth year presenting, and once again, there are no bells and whistles here. There's nothing innovative. There's nothing unique to this budget process. It's actually pretty consistent to what we've done over the past four years, four presentations. We seem to really, this is continuation of relevant information, we really seem to have a struggle with balancing our wants and our needs because we are fiscally handcuffed, because we don't have all the resources available to us. So we are always meeting our needs. Those are requirements, requirements, requirements. That always seems to be our foundation for budgeting. How do we meet our requirements? What's required of us as a school district? Our wants, we always want to be child-centered. There's no question about that. And we also, also want to provide the best education we possibly can with what we have, and we will continue to do that. But we'd like to put a couple more blocks on the left-hand side of this. Like I said, innovation, renovation. We'd like to put a couple more things on the, on the left-hand side of this that we, we struggle with. And when we look at our, measuring our wants and our needs, we really, as a district, focus on contractual obligations. That seems to always be a focus of ours. Employee benefits. It has to be a focus of ours. Needs-based programming, again, requirements, 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 compliance, compliance, compliance. High academic standards. We still maintain high academic standards, given our limited resources as a district, because we have excellent educators in Dudley Charlton. We have great families in Dudley Charlton. And we want to believe, and we still believe in a well-rounded education with music and athletics. I know that last year, those were very difficult conversations because of where we were with the override for FY twenty-four, but those are not part of this, completely part of this presentation this evening for FY twenty-five. There may be some impacts to it, but there, we are not looking at music or athletics as a reduction for us in FY twenty-five. So as a relevant information, I started fiscal year twenty-one was my first fiscal year. Again, we've had five fiscal years. We've reduced over one point five million dollars in positions in Dudley Charlton since I started here. One point five million dollars in positions. And I don't see that ending. If somebody else sees that ending, for us, out of our two communities, out of our school committee, the people who work here, please show me where that's going to end. I still see reductions on the horizon for us. So within four fiscal years, we reduced one point five million dollars in positions in Dudley Charlton to try to balance the budget. Or the equivalent of nineteen point seven FTEs. So more relevant information that I want to get into and share before we get into the FY twenty-five numbers is really to, for us to take a look at our school committee goals, because school committee set the goals, and these are very important goals, and we're still working on these. Again, with the limited resources we have, we're still working on these. The first one, the capital plan. We want to thank the communities again in FY twenty, September FY twenty-two, or September of twenty-twenty-two, there was support from both communities for our capital plan that involved an architectural review of our buildings. That is being done. That will be done during the February vacation. That will, the school committee, because there was money left in, not left, there was money in the capital plan that was approved. We folded Shepherd Hill in there because Shepherd Hill, as you know, did not make the feasibility study, but Shepherd Hill has needs. One of them is a roof. A roof is going to be coming forward to our communities. But we are looking at still revising our capital plan by the end of the school year. So a huge project, huge endeavor, required, needed. Cost savings opportunities. We're still working on cost-saving opportunities. There's no question about that. The school committee joined into a, you'll see it in one of the other slides, a solar, potential for solar savings for us for our two new roofs. We vented into, into an agreement to see if we can obtain a grant to support that as well. There may even be money in the grant to help offset some of the cost of replacing a roof at Mason Road, at Shepherd Hill, et cetera. But we're still looking for cost-saving initiatives, cost-saving ways within our particular district. Again, these are very important goals that are still being worked on. They're not, with FY twenty-five, these are not ignored in any way. The last item, operational audit. I know that that was a request. I do have a proposal on my desk that I need to share with school committee. We do have a proposal to do an operational audit for our district. This is to look at all of our operations from district office through our buildings. That is on our table. So that is on my desk. It will be on school committee's table, but we're looking to accomplish that this year as well. We know that that was, came out of FY twenty-four, too. So that is on the horizon, too. So educational experience. With school committee, we're looking at modern equipment and technologies. For those of you who may or may not know, we entered into a lease agreement for a new, new technology in our district. The best-case scenario would for us, be for us to be able to go out and actually buy new technologies, but we've had to enter into a multi-year lease program for new technologies in our district. As we talked about, Windows eleven, is it going to be a requirement? We needed to move forward with that. We did not have the full support financially to be able to go outright and, and correct that or prepare for that. So we're in a lease program, which everyone here should know that a lease program is only going to compound itself over time when we need other technologies. But it's what we had to do because we do have to continue to move forward with technology for our students. Outreach, the school committee has set goals to continue to work with you, and outreach with you as, as boards, with finance committees, et cetera, about where we are. So again, this is a presentation today about how, where we are, and then we hope to do some more work between now and when we, when school committee takes a final vote on the budget. And we welcome feedback on it. I also want to share other, the relevant information about the district plan. This has been in place for two years now. We, the district plan is very instrumental in how we move forward as a district, and we continue to move forward here. One was, the one goal for the district plan was to strengthen the continuum of learning. As you have heard, last year, we received over, for a couple of years, we received well over a million dollars in grants. This year, we did not. We applied for a grant. Our Acting Assistant Superintendent slash Dudley Elementary School Principal applied for a grant. We did not receive it. And one of the reasons why that we heard is because they wanted to share it with other districts that have not ever received that grant for hides, for high-quality instructional materials. But because we received over a million dollars, that's why we were kind of pushed to the side and other districts were moved to the front that did not receive quite what we received. But it's still part of our district plan moving forward. Goal number two is strengthen systematic practices and processes, improve student achievement outcomes. We will be presenting a student achievement report as a district, either at the end of March or beginning of April, to show how we are still, and again, the quality of educators in our district are what are moving us forward. It's not resources. We're doing the best we can with getting the resources we have, but the quality of educators in our district are what are moving us forward. The third goal is strengthen family and community engagement. We did roll out a new website. Again, we're still working on things moving forward, even with some of our limited resources. We are enhancing communication and some community engagement as well. And then for the fourth one, whether it's part of this, it's implicit, it's not, compliance, 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 that's a requirement of ours. We have to make sure that we're in a place of continuous improvement. And the baseline for continuous improvement for us always is being in compliance, compliance, making sure that we're doing what's right. As some of you may have heard or read, we are, the state has worked, is working with us and has indicated that we have some work to do around least restrictive environment for our vulnerable students within our district. That's part of this. That's part of the work we have to do, and how our students are performing on achievement tests. The state is winding back up to determine where we stand within regards to that, and we have some concerns that are raised by the state that we have to address as well. That's, basically, everything was kind of at a standstill through COVID, but now the, the requirements for districts to move forward around achievement and for all of our students, whether you are a general ed student, or you're a student with significant needs, or you're a student with other needs. We have to work together and establish a, a least restrictive environment for them. So that's why, whether it's implicit in the district plan or not, compliance, compliance, compliance is really what we need to do and meet all regulations. Again, this is all relevant information on how we plan our three sixty-five budget. The school committee also set fiscal budget priorities for this year. If you see something on the screen highlighted in gray, unfortunately, I will be sharing with school committee this evening that it's going to be very tough to maintain these. It's going to be very tough to meet these without addition, additional resources within our district, within our budget. That's maintaining a foreign language staffing program, five through twelve. That's restoring a point five librarian at each of our middle schools. Adding an accounting or data specialist in our district office, and exploring full-day kindergarten programs right now are going to be very difficult with adding additional resources for us as a district. Everything else, we're doing everything we possibly can to meet within the school committee's fiscal budget priorities.
Oh, okay. Do you want to call the order?
The Finance Committee will call its meeting to order at six forty-two.
Charlton. Gotcha. Thank you.
And continuing on with the school committee budget priorities, number two, we are addressing what's in number two as well. Capital plan, architectural review is occurring, and solar power options, we are definitely looking at that, and we've signed agreements with that. Hopefully, those come to fruition to continue to save our district money in utilities moving forward. Number three, the budget priorities. Again, I'm, this evening, I'm probably, it's not new news for our school committee, but it will be new news for, for many of you. Our efforts to continue to try to use, reduce our use of excess and deficiency from year to year is, is not going to occur this year again. And reducing our use of school choice by a certain value is not going to occur again this year. It's just not to try to set a fiscal year budget, to try to balance the budget. The next slide is our risks and assumptions. We just, we have to really focus on these. This is what will help anyone lose sleep who's trying to do budgeting for a regional or a public school district. We are one of the almost two hundred and fifty school districts in the state of Massachusetts who are minimum chapter seventy, or hold harmless district. That is a, a large number of districts. Almost fifty percent of the school districts in our state are hold harmless, which means that they're only receiving the minimum chapter seventy increase. So for us, for Dudley Charlton, that's a little under a hundred thousand dollar increase from the state to help offset any costs moving forward in fiscal year twenty-five. It's still a tough pill to swallow for us. Excess and deficiency, we're hoping it's stable for FY twenty-five. We're waiting for the certification of that right now, but we're hoping that's stable. School choice charter assessments, we're hoping that's stable for FY twenty-five. Any one of these can throw, throw off. These are risks and assumptions we're making. This is not a assumption or, and the risk is that we are level funding our supply accounts like we have for every fiscal year since I've been here, and our technology accounts. So that's the same value of FY twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and it will be the same for twenty-five. And the last risk and assumption, which has become more of a risk than an assumption at this point in time, is state reimbursements. We're hoping that they remain stable. Unfortunately, the governor's budgeting it, reduce transportation reimbursement by ten percent from this year to next year. Circuit breaker, we thought that we would, if you recall last year when I presented, and I'll mention it again in this presentation, we had a fourteen percent increase in our out-of-district tuitions from the state, from the offices of services, Operational Services Division. We had hoped that, and we were told during all of yet, because remember, every one of these are lagging reimbursements. We don't get that, we don't get the check the, the first day of, of the fiscal year. It's, it's a lagging from the previous fiscal year. Because of the fourteen percent increase, we were told, hang on, we'll do the reimbursement when, when the, when your request comes in the following year, because that's when the request comes in for the lagging reimbursement. And right now, the governor is not supporting the fourteen percent increase that we all felt going into the next fiscal year. So that's already a bit of a, a struggle for us. We thought there may have been some cost savings with some reimbursement with that to help offset FY twenty-five moving forward. So that's, those are clear risks for us right now. Fiscal risks for us, getting into FY twenty-five. So not to go over this too much, but last year, if you recall, we did require a override. We were looking for an increase of three point six million dollars. The reason, because as we expressed, expressed last year, it was a perfect storm of events that were happening for us. It was the fourteen percent of out-of-district tuition increase. It was the, we were going out for bid for transportation at the same time. That was a five hundred fifty thousand dollar hit. Our utilities, we were going out for new contracts with utilities. These things, it was a perfect storm and just kept hitting, hitting our increases as we went along to lead us to that presentation last year. So what I want to present this year to help ease the process a little bit, because this is what we predicted and what we presented last year. If you recall last year, when we were presenting for the need for the override, we were asked the question at every meeting, we If you recall last year, when we were presenting for the need for the override, we were asked the question at every meeting we were at, how can you be sure that transportation won't be five-fifty again the following year? How can you be sure that out-of-district placement won't be six-fifty-five again the following year? How can you be sure that utilities won't be four-thirty-five the next year? We were asked that question regularly, but we were saying, no, this is the high-water mark. If we set, establish our budget, this is where we're going to be. We'll look at what we consider somewhat normal increases after that. And that's, it's come to fruition with one, one huge exception that you'll see in this. So contractual obligations, again, this is, we're the largest employer in town, in the two towns. We have contractual obligations. Year over year, it's anywhere between one-point-one and one-point-three million dollars. That's what it is. Transportation, again, this, a one-twenty-four, four-sixty-three is what we would consider an annual increase to transportation costs from year to year. Of course, we'll do everything we can to see if we can reduce that a little bit more, but it's not the five-fifty, which was the new contract we were going under. Out-of-district, we believe with the six-fifty-five, with the override and the support of the six-fifty-five, that's within our budget at this point in time. There is no need for something to go, to ask for something beyond that. Could that change? Sure, that could change, but that's, we're presenting you the best budget we have right now. Employee benefits insurance, this is the one that is hitting us a little bit harder than we thought. And it's going to hit your communities as well. So, for example, our health insurance right now is safely predicted to go up by nine to ten percent. Worcester County Retirement, which impacts your communities as well, they already told us they're going up by nine percent. We have the most employees in Worcester County Retirement between the two towns. So that's a big nugget for us. This is another hit for us that we didn't, we didn't want to anticipate, but we have to, and it has to be in our budget. Utilities, again, because we worked hard, Mr. Matthew especially, worked out on the agreements and the contracts with utilities. Again, last year, we told you that we, going into these new contracts, this was going to be a high mark. It's all, everything is finished coming year in FY twenty-five is within budget. Instructional technology, within budget so far. And I know this is a difficult conversation, but S R, this is the last year for S R. S R ends June thirtieth, it's done, it's gone. If you recall, last year I presented, we were, we spent over a million dollars in this. We're only asking for the support of two additional positions, two positions that we needed, those are school adjustment counselors that our schools have needed coming out of COVID. Mental health is still a serious and significant issue for us as a school district. We need support for those two positions to continue with us. But we've done a really hard job of trying to transition. We knew the funding cliff was coming, we told you it was coming, but it's nowhere near what we were spending out of S R. This is, this is the last remaining piece out of S R that we need to move forward. Again, it's all, there's no S R in FY twenty-five. So what does that look like? And the assistant superintendent, we're looking to bring the assistant superintendent back for next year. So what does it look like for, well, let's call it a level services plus the assistant superintendent, a level services plus the assistant superintendent is two-point-four million dollars, two-four-seven-one-three-one-nine, or a four-point-three-six percent increase. Again, this just outlines it a little bit more so you can see this on page sixteen, kind of what it really looks like, you know, comparison from one year to the next, to give you an idea. The fourteen percent, as you see, I put in there because that was a huge hit for us last year. The nine percent for health insurance for our employees is a big hit, and we added the assistant superintendent. I did add options, I'm going to go over the options because I did hear from last year that people prefer options. Looking at the budget, last year, we really wasn't kind of an option year. We did the best we could because we were looking for a substantial increase in our fiscal year budget, just to get into FY twenty-four. The percentages on the bottom, five-point-eight-three percent and four-point-four percent. So as you know, I'm part of all these groups, superintendents, other districts and all that kind of stuff. The average of what districts are looking for right now is a five-point-eight-three percent increase to their budget. That's districts near us, far from us, around the state, that's the average. And I've seen numbers as high as ten, twelve, thirteen percent is what they're looking for for a fiscal year increase to their budgets. So I'm just trying to do some comparison to where we are as a district. If, if we did level services plus the assistant superintendent, that's four-point-three-six percent. That's well under the average. And then what they're saying, what the, my colleagues are saying, what the towns are working with them on is really a four, an average of a four-point-four percent increase. So it's all within, it's, Dudley Charlton Regional School District is all within the, in the fiscal game that's out there regarding districts at this point in time. So I want to kind of describe the options that are out there because, again, we know that two-point-four million is still a lot. We know that when we met with town leaders in early January and shared information in December, late December, that we thought the high-water mark was going to be two million dollars for us as, for fiscal year twenty-five as a high-water mark getting into fiscal year twenty-five. We did not predict the health insurance increase, so that changed it. So we know two-point-four is a change in direction from what we shared. So how do we, so we, being good stewards of your, your money and sharing that information, we need to somehow show you a plan to get under two million dollars, because that's what we were talking about at that point. So option one is a level service budget, and again, there's no vote this evening, but we're looking for a level services budget plus the assistant superintendent. Option number two is any one of these, any combination of these. And option three is all of those in the middle to get to a fiscal year budget of one-point-nine million. So to try to be a little more explicit in the value, for option number two, we believe, everything we know today, that we could still remain within the school committee's goals for class size and find at least one reduction within our, within our elementary schools based off of their expectations around class size. Shifting grades, shifting enrollment, there's a risk with that. And as school committee knows, every year, we have the risk of enrollment at the pre-K K, just like we did this year, where we had to shift one teacher to kindergarten because enrollment was skyrocketing. So there's still a risk with that. I'd love to be able to be here as superintendent and say, we will carry that one position at elementary level in the event that we have an overflow of enrollment or changes in pre-K K. But it's, in option two, it only increases the risk for that increased enrollment, and it presents itself as a way to try to balance the budget under two million dollars. Two middle school teachers, we are identifying Spanish at the middle school level. This is not new information, this has been out there as information. For anyone who has students at Charlton Middle School, you'll know the struggle we've had this year in even trying to find a Spanish teacher at the middle school. I'd like to say that that is a hundred percent the reason why it's up there, it's not. We still have to identify things and experiences for our students that we may have to reduce to try to balance the budget. An additional high school student, remember, go back to the slide of one-point-five million in reductions. So we're still taking from levels. High school, we, we believe, Principal Elwell believes that there could be a reduction at the high school level based off of course selection, what students select for courses. If you have an overflow of students selecting more science courses than other courses or more math than other courses, there could be a reduction in one of the departments to try to help balance the budget. The next, three-point-o, paraprofessionals, the library powers are part of this. Again, that should not be new information for people. Since I've been here, that seems to always be on the list of reductions. And plus one additional power to try to, again, balance the budget at one-point-nine million. Technology, again, we said that we, it's within budget at this point in time. We will change our, our expectations for meeting Windows eleven. We will maybe have to look at another lease program, again, which is going, only going to compound itself time over time. But we have to do something for a budget with limited areas to reduce. And then we've identified late buses at the secondary level. We're monitoring ridership on that, we have limited ridership, but if that is a hard choice, we will come in with hard data at the next meeting before that decision is made. But all of this represented an option two. Option two is represented as all but one in that list, because if you do all of those, the value five-sixty-three leads you right to option three. At a balanced budget of one-point-nine million-dollar increase for fiscal year twenty-five. The only other caveat, which the school committee has been discussing this at several meetings, is fees, increasing fees to help offset the operating budget. This is not set in stone, this has not even been voted on, this is what has been discussed for increasing fees. This is me going out on a limb at this point in time, but I know that it would be part of any budget presentation moving forward. If school committee who's had dialogue on this and deliberated this, if we were to increase pre-K fees for our students that attend pre-K, that could see an estimate of fourteen thousand dollars to help offset, offset our operating budget or continue to offset the one-point-nine million dollars. If we increased user fees for athletics for middle school, which would be the first time we've assessed fees for middle school, we could look at possibly twenty thousand dollars. High school, we could look at an increase of thirty-five thousand dollars. There is high school parking there, that's always a question that comes up year over year. The reason why it's crossed out is because it would do nothing to offset our operating budget, even if we increased it. And there's been no interest in increasing it anyways. But even if we increase parking fees, because, because it goes into a revolving account that repairs our parking lot. So that doesn't offset our operating budget. That's all that, that account is used for. So with the fees that have been discussed and deliberated at school committee over the past couple of months, if school committee were to act on fees, I just want to just share with you that that could offset sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of operating costs for us as a district. Those are the ones that school committee sets. So, so once again, I went through this, I showed this earlier. This really gives you the outline of the options on the right-hand side, bottom box. Right now, four-point-three-six percent increase at two-point-four-seven, that's level service plus the assistant superintendent. Option two is anything up to and all up to five-sixty-three. And a, option three is reducing all five-sixty-three, but continuing to support the assistant superintendent position with a three-point-three percent operating budget increase for FY twenty-five. So on the left-hand side, you can see already from the get-go in FY twenty-four, right from the start, even if we looked at level service with the assistant superintendent, it's already one-point-one or one-point-two million dollars less than what we were looking for last year because of the perfect storm that we talked about. And if we move towards a one-point-nine million-dollar budget increase for FY twenty-five, it's one-point-seven million dollars less than our ask for FY twenty-four for an operating budget. So as I shared the next, what's next, we'll, I'm going to recommend that school committee would vote and support a budget workshop on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth. And then we would have our budget hearing on March thirteenth. And possibly another budget workshop on March twenty-seventh, and then the town meetings, which are on the boat, both the same night this year, both May twentieth, both in Dudley and Charlton, around the same night. So you'll get half of me and then you'll get the other half of me, so. Wherever I don't go, somebody will say that I, I wasn't there, so. But May twentieth is the town meetings for the fiscal year twenty-five vote. So at this point, it's, it's any questions? I know that was a overall presentation, there's still a little bit of work to be done. We're trying to give you the best numbers we have right now for all of this.
Can, can I just, before we go to questions, I just, I want to bring our student member up because she's an important part of our committee and I want to make sure she has a seat at the table. So Sophia, if you want to come up.
Is that seat open?
Okay. Thank you, Sophia. No, you were on time, there just wasn't, I just want to make sure you had a seat.
Great, okay.
Has there been any change in the district split this year, do we anticipate any change?
Any change in the district?
In the district split between the percentages between, shared, shared percentages between Charlton and enrollment numbers and that sort of thing.
There's been just a slight change in the enrollment. The enrollment for Charlton went down, we're talking very small, and Dudley went up.
Okay, so that will affect Dudley's contribution?
Yes.
We don't know what that number would be?
We don't because we're waiting for E and D certification to have the final number.
Okay, thank you.
As soon as we have that, we'll, we'll get that to you.
Okay.
The regional agreement says, I think, sixty-five days out, which the March thirteenth meeting would be well within that, to try to get that to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Things have slowed down a little bit in the district office.
May I?
Yeah.
You're the chair. Question, I am on this page, it's not numbered, it's a...
Oh, that's FY twenty-four.
Okay, so that's not...
Nope, that's, that's FY twenty-four, school committee's voting on the reduction in salaries in FY twenty-four to meet the FY twenty-four mark.
I guess what I was, I guess what I was looking for was the percent change to the assessment. How much is Charlton's assessment changing from last year and how much is Dudley's changing by the percentage?
Great question, and as I just shared with John, we don't have that today.
Okay.
We're waiting for E and D certification to have the final numbers on, on that. But they'll be, they'll, and we're waiting for, the, the state numbers did come out with the cherry sheet and stuff. We could have given you a number, but inevitably, we changed by March thirteenth. We didn't want to give you a number and then be told that we gave you something different.
Okay.
Okay, so by March thirteenth, we, is our goal to get you those, which is sixty-five days out for the regional agreement.
Excellent.
To have all of that. But it's a great question. Keep in mind, in the packet, that's FY twenty-four for those of you who took the full packet, because school committee does need to vote on the lines for the reductions in salaries this evening. That was a January item that was carried over.
Part of it was cut off the top, that's why I was doing math.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that.
No, don't worry about it.
Mr. Fox, is there a quick question on the fees that you even got up on the screen there? How, how does that compare with other districts?
We did, the budget and finance subcommittee and our athletic director and others have done some comparison, it's all over the map. It's all over the place. There is no consistency, there's no way to understand that, it's community-based, it's, it's relative, it's, you know, it's, it's all over the map. There are high, there are some that charge extremely high, there are some that don't charge at all.
So that middle school athletics fee would be new this year?
Correct.
Potentially, okay?
Yep.
Any feel for feedback? I mean, how, how parents, I'm just curious how parents are going to react to something like that? It's just another reason I gotta cut a check.
Agreed. I, I'm not sure, that's why, that's why I think school committee has tried to do a lot, a ton of homework on that before there's a decision. But again, I put it in tonight just because it has been part of a conversation, so the community should be aware that we've been talking about fees. Some of what we heard through FY twenty-four was, you know, don't cut athletics, well, we'd rather pay for it than you cut it. And so that's all part of this flavor as well. As you see through this in option two, there is no cut for athletics in there, there's no cut for music programs in there. But we needed to be part of this presentation so people know that it's still on the radar. But right now, there is no vote and there's no change to it.
Are there any other contracts or negotiations that have to be done this year that you're going to have to hold open? I don't know, a union contract or a...
We're negotiating a contract with our paraprofessionals this year, and we enter into negotiations with our teachers next year.
Next year, okay. So these employment numbers are pretty stable.
Sure.
As, as, yeah, as stable as you can get.
As stable as we can get them, yeah. Everything we know today to try to present, without, without big major shifts in the sand. But it's going to, it's, it's going to take a lot of effort and work. Because I think everyone is paying attention to what's happening across our state when it comes to labor relations.
Steve, I assume that these, these budget figures don't include the capital assessment for the school, or for the yarroos either?
They don't.
Okay.
Specifically, you're talking about what was, what was approved in September twenty-twenty-two?
Correct.
Correct, yeah, no, they do not.
Steve, thanks for that, appreciate it. So it was good to see that the, the operational audit stuff was carried forward. I think a lot of people are paying attention, you know, now, and our board has taken an interest in really like taking a look at like our, our processes and procedures and pursuing grants for that. Since the last budget cycle, have we done any, like, anything proactive from an audit standpoint or other and operational-type things, like reviews internal to get a sense of getting ahead of, like, the costs and increases? I just feel like I have to ask that.
It's a fantastic question.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we're really in survival mode. With the reduction of the assistant superintendent not having that position, we've had to put that on a, a elementary principal for a portion of that position, and the rest of it is within my office. With the transition from Mr. Matthew, we do have Ms. Lamica here, but it doesn't... But it doesn't mean that a hundred percent of what Rich was doing is now with Ms. Lamica at this point in time, is an interim role. So have we done things to try to be proactive the best we possibly can? It's a great question and I wish I had a much better answer for you.
No, I understand, it's just like, I think, you know, I started anticipating questions that people might have for this, so I just wanted to make sure. I know it's on the list of things to do, but, you know.
I know the assistant superintendent position will come up. Because it was relatively new to Dudley Charlton, it came in my first year here. But I think what continues to get lost is there were two director positions that we cut to create that position. So we took two, we actually saved the money, saved the district sixty thousand dollars by creating that position. Because that's all we do here, we try to create things to save. So it's a title that I think is throwing people off. But there were two directors here when I first started, we went to one assistant superintendent and now we don't have either a director or an assistant superintendent.
Thanks.
Yeah. Again, I want to say, it's so much better than FY twenty-four, so much better. But I never came in here...
Because we don't know the numbers yet.
It's so much better than FY twenty-four. But it has to be, exactly. But I don't want it, it's not, it's not perfect, it's not exactly where everybody wants it to be. And again, I think what threw us off was we were managing, we do appreciate the voters of Dudley for the override because that is. Those high watermarks are being, we can absorb those within our budget because of that now. But the health insurance increase is just, it's taken us by surprise this year at nine percent. That's, that's quite the nugget, Worcester County Retirement, nine percent again on them. It seems like we always have one little category that we unanticipated would be a larger increase. So that if you look at, you know, some of our planned reductions, if we, if our starting mark was, you know, the two million dollars. It would be even better with some of the reductions that we offered, there's other options in there. But it just, it's not FY twenty-four over again, thank goodness.
I think the thing that we need to be careful of too is that every time we make reductions in staffing and programs. We run the risk of losing students to other districts, which then we will have to pay out for. So that, that's something that I think is, we need to think about.
Kathy, is that happening?
No, our enrollment is stable right now. I think it's more of an issue with some unique staffing positions. Like Spanish, if you, if you see Spanish on the list of reductions every year, it's, it's not a, it's not a go-to place to try to apply for that position.
Any other questions, comments? Do any of our members have any comments?
I could just say, I guess, did, you know, I've done my due diligence and kind of asked a lot of questions. Because over the years of being involved in this district. For me, Dudley Charlton is like, that's it. Like, our communities don't have big gathering places, we don't have anything, we rely on our schools. My mom was a teacher at our school, I was a student, my husband was a student. Both graduated here, one from Dudley, one from Charlton, like, we're not going anywhere. We don't want our kids to go anywhere, we need to offer these things. And, you know, thirty years in watching this, it's gonna get real emotional because this is starting to really come down to, we can't do it anymore. We can't do it, I've watched it, been there. I volunteered thousands of hours in our school over the past few years with our administration, with our custodians, with our teachers, all over the board. And I've gone through these numbers and I've looked at them, I've asked my questions, I met with Rich a few times before he left. We just can't do it. We really need to, one of these days, be able to keep what we have and maybe advance. I mean, we all know technology's skyrocketed. And we can't even catch up to where we need to be, we're talking about putting less. Like, it's just so sad to watch. I'm glad that everybody's here and that we can kind of all get this pulled together. But we need to figure out a way to make this work and be successful all around for these kids, for our community, for everybody here. So I don't, I don't know how we get there, I obviously wish I did, I wish you guys did. But I hope that we can work together to find a way to make this happen. Because year after year after year, it's just, it's hard, it's hard to watch. And, you know, sitting on this side of the table, there's a reason I, I'm here. You know, it became a real concern. And I, I don't want to see what happened, like, I never want to see a repeat of last year. I think we started the year with thirty-five new positions, somewhere around there, and twelve empty positions. Like, that's, that's heartbreaking for a district that has, we're the meat and potatoes of this, of this community. And we have to take care of it. And, you know, when we continue year after year to put all these positions on the line, we lose some good people, they go. You know, they don't, they don't want to do it anymore, it's, it's hard, you know? We've lost so many people over time. And I think a lot of it has to do unfortunately with, with our situation. So I honestly, I just would like to see us be able to figure out a way to make this work where we don't have to continue to cut year after year. Because once these positions are gone, they don't ever come back. We, very, very limited times do we add things back. You know, we just have to stop being that district, we want to be the district everybody wants to come to again. We want to have these things and have our kids continue to thrive and, and do what's best, so. You know, for me, like I said, the school, it's, it's my second home, has been all my life. And I want, I want my kids to have that same appreciation for our community. So I hope that we can really come together and make this work. But I do thank you all for your time and always willing to talk and, and have some conversations, so, thank you all.
Thank you, well said, Kelly. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, yes, go ahead.
Segueing off of what Kelly said earlier, I feel like it's just so frustrating as a student and like as a sibling as well. Because although I'm a senior, I still have a sister that's here. And I feel like it's kind of, it's just haunting. Because a lot of these parents are making decisions about how, at least in our school. And obviously, they have their own personal reasons as to why they maybe can't make certain sacrifices for our schools. But at the same time, it also prevents future students from coming here. And especially in certain activities that cost extra money or certain opportunities where, like, I don't know. Certain, like field trips or like internships that a lot of professionals aren't able to implement. Because they aren't here anymore, where it's kind of like, those things aren't kind of just extracurriculars. They also introduce certain communication skills and independence. And it's kind of, it's just, it's frustrating to just have to make these decisions. And I know we have to, obviously, we don't want to. But it's just hard when a lot of people I know in my life are involved with certain things that are at risk of being reduced. And I just, I don't know. I'm, I'm just a little frustrated.
Anyone else? Well, today marks the first start of the conversation and I'm sure we're going to keep having these conversations. So we really thank you for coming to the table so that we can come together and have these conversations as one. It's really important. At this point, I would allow the individual chairs if they want to close their meetings. Great, why don't we take a five-minute recess before we continue on with the agenda? Yeah, we, we made the cookie. Bring the meeting back to order. We're going to move on to the consent agenda items, just a matter of... Just so you know, we're moving B, we're going to table B towards the next meeting if we can. So we're really only approving A and C, the middle-level athletic waivers for boys and girls lacrosse and softball and the approval of the warrant. I would entitate a motion to accept the consent agenda items as listed. So moved.
Second.
Okay.
We're in a straight line, so it's harder for me to see.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh yeah, that is going to be hard to see. We could spread out. Okay, unanimous, that's fine. All right, great. And we'll move on to communications, do any of our members have communications? Yes.
I just wanted to follow up about the fundraiser that was held for A.J. Congdon at the end of January. It was a very well-attended event at the Beagle Club, we had some nice food, there was a DJ, lots of laughs, tons of raffle baskets. And we were able to raise just a little bit over five thousand dollars for his family. And the best part was that A.J. actually was there, a lot of his family members were there. And it was just a really, really special afternoon, it was really nice.
All right, so for the Dudley Charlton Special Education Parents Advisory Council. The Coffee and Conversation is on March sixth at nine AM at the Sturbridge Coffee Roasters in Dudley. The March, CPAC's not having a meeting this month because it's, it'd be smack down, you know, right smack in February vacation. So the next meeting is March twentieth at the Dudley Middle School for Basic Rights Transition Planning. So that's fourteen and up, eighteen and up. So if you're getting towards transition for like an eighteen to twenty-two or moving on towards adulthood, it's a great meeting to go to. And then working with Director Heather Harriman is that we're getting the CPAC survey out. To see how our services are going and how Dudley Charlton services are going for students affected with IEPs and 504s. So they should be receiving that in their emails hopefully this week.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else have any communications? No? Okay, we will move on to the student representative report, if you'd like to move closer.
This seems a little awkward. I mean, I feel like it'd be more awkward for me to move now, but it's okay, I guess I'll just stay over here. So for the last two weekends, the Shepherd Hill Choir is actually, the first, the first weekend in February. Shepherd Hill Choir has just hosted their Central Massachusetts Choir Festival, which was a huge success. And then the following weekend, they went to Tantascua for their Tantascua Choir Spectacular. I'm pretty sure that's what the acronym stands for. But our unisex group Illusion won grand champions with best vocals and best choreography. And shout out to best soloist Rosalie Nolton, who just got an award in that group. And then our co-op group Fantasy came in fourth place and they got a silver medal, which is still really impressive, especially for the beginning of the season. And I think everybody is excited to see their growth throughout the season. Also, for the last couple of days, the National Art Honor Society has been selling small bags of candy for Valentine's Day. It was a super fun way for people to kind of celebrate or just treat themselves. And we just had senior night on Monday for the girls' basketball and just honored our senior Heidi Jeros. Because she's the only senior on the varsity basketball team. I feel like I'm speaking too fast, I'm sorry.
You're doing great.
Some upcoming events are, the music department, specifically the choir department, is taking a little weekend trip to New York City for this weekend. We leave on Friday, I'm going, so I'm really excited. But a lot of the weekend is composed of seeing musicals and working with some Broadway actors and actresses. And it's just going to be a fun way for us to kind of branch out and try something new while also growing together as a choir. And then I think the Best Buddies Club is having an UNO tournament on Thursday, March fourteenth, from six to eight PM. There's an entrance fee of five dollars and registration ends on March first. And the last thing I have on here is that the Trium Music Honor Society has Bingo, Musical Bingo on Thursday, March twenty-eighth. It starts at six PM. And as I, as far as I know, it's only open to students. So if you guys have some kids or if you just know a couple of students that are, might be interested, you should tell them to come. And the bingo cards are three dollars each or you can get four of them for ten dollars. And that concludes my student report.
Thank you so much. Do you have anything further to report?
Ma'am Chair, I apologize to the committee, I did not have a formal superintendent's report this evening. I do have a couple of announcements though to share. I just want to remind the committee that April sixth, Saturday, April sixth, is the Heroes Among Us DCEF event. There is, I think in the first week, I think they sold like fifty-something tickets in the first week. So it's, it's a place to be, so April sixth, get your tickets. And I know that school committee was well-represented there last time and I know DCEF really appreciated that. The other is we continue to go down roads of cost-saving initiatives and working with our communities. We did work with the town of Charlton in their grant for green communities. And we did receive, and they were, they were informed, a grant of up to, for us, eighty-nine thousand dollars for the Charlton schools. To help support some of the green, green communities work within their particular community. So that's a good eighty-nine thousand dollars to go towards the... work uh within their particular community. So that's a good eighty-nine thousand dollars to go towards the Charlton Schools uh to, to, um support their green communities. Um, and that, at this time, that concludes my uh chair.
Great, thank you. Um, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anyone that wishes to make a comment? Sure, if you wanna just come right up. Um, just a reminder, just to make sure you state your name and what town you're from. Thank you.
I know, I talk all the time. Uh, Robin Watson from Dudley. And I just have a question for the superintendent. When will we see the cost of the Dudley Middle School roof that was already put on? When will we see that capital cost in our budget?
Uh, that, it's, it's forthcoming. I, I, I don't have an exact date because the, the district is working on the bonds for that right now.
Okay.
And there are interests on the bands as well.
And will that be on the school budget or will that be on our town budget?
It's the town budget. It's assessment to the town.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? No? Okay. Moving on to new business, um A fiscal year two thousand twenty-four of the line item adjustments. Um, this was originally presented on January twenty-eighth. Um, Ms. Lamakia?
Lamakia. Lamarche.
Yeah.
Close, it's all close, right? So I know Mr. Matthew presented the information at the last meeting. And I know the committee would like, wanted some time to review it. I don't know if there's any questions or if I can help answer anything. In the meantime, so these were fiscal twenty-four adjustments that were made during the current year of what was originally budgeted versus what was actually happening as of January. And that budget also included the two hundred dollar, two hundred thousand dollar reduction that wasn't actually implemented on specific lines.
Okay. Um, I entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four um budget as presented now with the two hundred thousand dollar reduction.
Second.
Second, Jean. Do we have any discussion on that? No. No. Does anyone else? No. I know we've, we've talked about it before, so I just didn't know. Okay. Um, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Great, thank you. We'll move on to the school year calendar. Um, Superintendent Lamarche?
I'm Madam Chair of the School Committee. Uh, as a reminder, this is, this, the school calendar is set by the school committee. Um, so the school committee um does, can make adjustments to, to this um this evening or at a later date. So the school calendar has gone through a couple steps and a couple processes, including a subcommittee that's made up of representation from school committee. And so this evening, I am presenting to you what the school, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five proposed school calendar looks like uh for next year. Um, I will run through it. If there's, please stop me if there's any questions. Uh, so the typical start is the week before um Labor Day. So that continues to be our typical start. On the twenty-sixth is the Convocation Orientation Day for the new school year. And students start on the twenty-seventh. And then we have a half-day on the thirtieth, the Friday before Labor Day. As proposed. Uh, kindergarten pre-K starts on the third, the Tuesday after Labor Day. And then there is a early release day on the twenty-seventh of September. That is for Mr. Avi? I do have an extra copy. It, it, we ran out of copies, so, but I do have an extra copy for you.
I'll, I'll cozy up.
Okay, alright. I have no problem. I have an extra copy, so.
I wasn't trying to interrupt, sorry.
No, no, no. We're just trying to get you the information. Um, so the September twenty-seventh, uh Fri- that is a contractual half-day. And so that is for our students, as, as we've shared over the past couple of years, our staff has been inundated with requirements year over year of mandated, mandated trainings, et cetera. So, we work you as a committee and, and our administrators work with our uh local association and we felt that that was an appropriate day uh to build into our school year calendar to support our staff in all of their required trainings.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
Will that um be any refreshers for Alice trainings as well?
For new staff, yes.
For new staff?
For new staff. Then moving into October, October tenth is identified as an early release day for all students for parent conferences. The recommendation was to have all of our parent conferences on one day instead of two separate days based off of grade levels. So that's why it is built in as it is in this calendar. We typically have the Friday off before, for professional development, Friday off for students, for PD, for staff, uh the Friday before October, but we only have two PD days within our calendar year. Uh, so the recommendation, because we have a national election on November fifth, and this is a trend, uh is to move the Professional Development Day to November fifth versus the Friday before Columbus Day. Uh, so that's why you do not see that reflected for those um who have seen other calendars. Uh, Veterans Day is on the eleventh. Then we have our Thanksgiving break, which happens to be the last week of, of November this year. Then moving into the December holiday, uh the holiday vacation. Uh, typically, we would have a half-day on the twenty-third of December. Uh, the recommendation is to have a half-day on the twentieth, the Friday before the holiday break. Um, and then move all the way through uh for a full two weeks. The past couple of years, uh the experience for all families and staff have been about roughly one week or one day, one weekend, one day. Um, and then we've also received feedback that the, after the holiday break, when we move to another uh day off for students for professional development for our staff, the Friday before Martin Luther King Day, um we have noticed some trends. We've heard that that happens rather quickly. It feels like we just came off of the holiday break. Do we need that Friday? Um, we know that will impact some families who do plan a ski trip or something of that nature for that weekend. But we felt it would be best to try to, uh for staff and for families, to give two full weeks and, and build the PD day into the Friday before we return uh from the holiday break. And also looking at the last day, it really truly does not impact the overall school year calendar for us. So we felt it was an appropriate use of, of that time. Uh, then we have uh January twentieth, which is Martin Luther King Day. Then we move into February. There are no days other than February Vacation in February, which is unique and unusual. And then we move into March. We have March twentieth identified based off of the feedback we received for parent teacher conferences to be a little bit later in the spring. And also that uh the goal to have all of our parent teacher conferences on one day versus two separate days based off grade levels. Uh, we have April eighteenth Friday as a um early release day. That's uh been the traditional uh Good Friday uh that we've done an early release day uh year after year. Uh, then we move into May. Uh, it's, I know that we've heard a lot about half-days for um early relea- excuse me, early release days for other uh purposes other than parent teacher conferences, uh the typical holiday ones. Uh, this is a, to me and, and our staff, this is integral to the ending the one school year and starting preparing for the following school year, late in the school year. So it gives a half-day of PD, anything we need to wrap up uh for our staff. So it's a half-day for, for students. Graduation would be on Sunday, June first. And if there were no um weather-related um days, uh the last day of school would be June twelfth. And if there, we have to build up to five, um and if there were five um weather-related closures, uh we would go to June twentieth. And that presents, the only other change you, you, you'll see here is that uh this past year, uh the school districts piloted trimesters at the middle school level. Um, my understanding is that the middle schools and it, it are going to move back to quarters like Shepherd Hill Regional High School. So that'll be changed if you did notice that um as well within this particular calendar. But that, that, that does present the school year twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the calendar. That's made?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Um, discussion? Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I was on the school, um the subcommittee um for the calendar and it actually didn't um really dawn on me until tonight. There's something that we did have in March, um a few years past, and I'm not sure why it got dropped off, but um it doesn't require any days off or anything, but it was the family come first night. And I know March is a pretty, you know, put-your-head-down-and-just-get-through-it month um with not many days off. So if it might be a nice option to have maybe somewhere in between the winter, like sports, or try and find a day where there's nothing planned, no homework offered, no, you know, activities and it's just a night for families to have together. Um, I don't know. I don't know why it dropped off. I don't, I wasn't sure about that, but it's just something that I thought of today and just wanted to mention.
Is that, is that a national kind of thing?
No, that's a, that's a very curricular thing. It's a local thing.
Okay.
And that dropped off uh my first year, here. It was recommended to, to, to drop that, but that's, again, this is a school committee calendar. If school committee wants to have a, set, set a day for that, that's up to the school committee.
Kind of like a wellness day?
Yeah, it, and I, the only, it sparked my um memory of it today because I was at work and um one of my coworkers, her daughter's at college and she goes in Vermont and all of the college is off and they go skiing. Um, so I'm like, wow, that's kind of nice. Like, you know, the college just takes like a wellness day. Um, there's no classes and it's a full day. So this wouldn't require any time off of the school and in-class learning. It would just be, you know, no sports, no activities, no assigned homework. It's one night. That doesn't mean that kids aren't going to choose to do additional homework, you know, but it's just kind of a night, it's just family come first, you know? We all have families sit around the table and, you know? I don't know.
Can, can I suggest something for that? Um, I do think that's a great idea, um cause I think it's important to have like an electronics-free night sometimes. Um, I just wonder if we should throw it back to our admin team so that they can look at their calendars, cause I know, you know, there are sports, there are other commitments such as MCAS that comes in certain weeks and I just wanna make sure that we, we look, we give them the option of looking at those dates. Um, and they can always come back and we can revote as well.
Just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
Does anyone else have anything?
I just have a question for confirmation, which I assume, but I don't wanna assume. So, um, we said we switched the teacher conferences. That was per the administration and the teachers for the time of the year that we were switching it to?
I, I would say from all, is it a hundred percent? No, but from a lot of entities, yes. Including a, a parent here this evening who presented, shared that with us as well.
Well, just as long as the teachers felt that that was, they were being represented and that was a good time for them to
Remember that the small committee is also represented by their association leaderships.
Oh, right. Okay.
Anyone have anything further on the calendar at this moment? Okay. All those in favor of the calendar as currently stated? Yeah, go ahead. Do you have a question? No, no need to be sorry. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor? I think that's unanimous.
Was it unanimous? Okay.
Yeah. And I, wait, it was unanimous?
Yeah, I mean, do I abstain? It's cause I brought that. I don't, I, I'll
No, I think that, I think that that's something we need to look to and I think that
And if we just need to modify it.
Yeah, we can always modify that and just add it. And I think we, if we can do that sooner rather than later, so we can publish it with those dates, that would be great. Is that okay?
Uh, you, you threw me off by saying dates.
Oh, dates.
So you're looking for more than one?
No, we're looking for one family first somewhere in March, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, with the admin team.
Yeah, okay. I'll bring it back to the committee for that.
Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you.
But we could at least get this posted.
Right, we can at least get this posted because it's not gonna affect, it's not a day off or anything.
Right. And as always, if anyone finds a typo, please share. I'd be wanting to be a hundred percent accurate.
Sure.
A lot of little details in it.
Sure, okay. Um, and we will move to C, the appointment to the Mass Strategic Health Group Board. Superintendent Lamarche?
Madam Chair of the School Committee, hi, me again. With the departure of Mr. Matthew, we need, now need to assign a administrator to this incredible board. And um I, I looked around my office and I, my hand was raised.
Are you a volunteer?
So I was, yes.
By himself, by himself.
So, I have to ask school committee to uh take a formal vote and vote me uh to be a member, uh the representative member for the Mass Strategic Health Group Board of Directors.
I entertain a motion to appoint Superintendent Lamarche to the Mass Strategic Health Board Group.
Second.
Second, Jean. Is there any discussion? No, thank you.
Thank you.
The first meeting is Tuesday, February twentieth.
Is it remote?
Um, I tried one of them remote, but it didn't really work, so.
Sorry.
I'll be, I'll be in bed way that day.
Alright, all those in favor?
Thank you for your support.
It's unanimous.
It was no, nobody worried about that. Okay, um and then we'll go to school committee's subcommittee updates. Does anyone have any updates for their subcommittees?
Some, uh, Madam Chair, that some of the meetings got jumbled and moved and all that kinda stuff because of everything that was going on. So I did, I did my best to try to capture when the next meetings are.
Great.
Uh, there is a typo for the school committee agenda for March thirteenth. That is uh six-thirty PM on the back. Um, and again, I would respectfully ask school committee to, to vote on a workshop at the end of February twenty-eighth for, for budget workshop.
Okay.
If, if you're so inclined. Um, and then budget and finance, we are trying to come up with a date. We did have some correspondences today. Uh, policy review, we are meeting March first at eight AM at the district office. Curriculum sub that is TBD still and Capitoli is March twentieth at three PM. So those, those dates are um pretty good.
Okay. Um, I entertain a motion to approve a school committee meeting for
I would say workshop.
A school committee workshop for Wednesday.
February twenty-eighth.
February twenty-eighth.
Six-thirty PM.
At six-thirty PM and that would be in Charlton. So moved, so moved by Jean. Is there a second? Kelly? Kelly. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Where are we doing?
In Charlton.
In Charlton? Library?
Yep. Any questions? No? Alright, um, all those in favor?
You may ask.
Thank you.
Alright, so if any other questions, comments, concerns before we move to adjourn? I entertain a motion to adjourn? Moved by Caitlin, second.
Second?
Second by Jean. Okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous.